... Is there any further comment?
I've only got one, but it's Aaron probably ought to be here because I don't want to throw him under the bus.
Okay. We have a public session in that.
I have some things I want to say. Stayed up or how do you want it?
However you want it.
For the highway meeting, this is the highway meeting.
No, no, this is the county.
Oh, this is the studies, county study session.
Don't you want to say something, John?
Pay attention.
Oh, sorry, I was.
Just you want to say?
No, I'm good.
I have some things I want to talk about. We spent a lot of time over the last eleven, twelve months, thirteen months just bashing people. Well deserved, I think, in certain cases, but we'll go too deep in that. I thought today I'd try to give you some ideas. Right now, from what I see in here, I don't think that your recent appointee has much credibility or respectability or the trust of the airport people in general. I think she discredits this board by her behavior and that she undermines the resolution of the problems at hand. She's just baggage. Part of the reasons for these comments are that she had an election there at the advisory board level that no one agrees with or many people don't agree with. This is where the Lisa Madigan's office came back and said, you know, you can't have a secret ballot to make a nominee. So she starts out on a bad foot with people because that process wasn't within the law. A public meeting cannot have secret ballots. And then she's proceeded to get hostile and she attacked my son's business in the May eighth county board meeting, which she had special permission to come here and talk about airport issues. But that became a bashing fest and that's on video. Anybody gets tired of watching TV can watch that. She's also been trespassing on leased property for the sole purpose of taking incriminating pictures just to attack and remove my son from the airport. She said that openly and she wants to do that and that's her agenda. But everything she does out there reflects what this board has done by appointing her and it speaks poorly for this board. She's been caught eavesdropping on conversations. On one occasion, she's launched into some sort of emotional, out of control fit and began throwing my son's college degrees and his hard earned certificates of accomplishments and certifications to work on airplanes only on the floor. And she did this in retaliation because she overheard things on a conversation that she wasn't invited to and it didn't suit her, so she threw a tantrum. She's known to request details regarding order protection requirements, since her appointment, and her stated purpose was for the use of prohibiting those critical of her performance from attending meetings. Some people allege she staged a medical emergency to serve this purpose. And since she didn't require hospitalization and didn't require an ambulance at the scene there, you know, it caused some of the wonder. For the good of the county, and I think that's what we're trying to get to here, what I've got to say this morning is, the appointee hasn't lived up to her expectations, unless these are your expectations. I really don't think they are. And removing her would be something that would work out better and it would stop her from continually to undermine the progress that's being made in trying to resolve issues. So that's the first thing I want to say today is that enough's enough. She's not making you look good. She's hurting your credibility. It's maybe time to ask her to resign or at least to have the advisory board conduct another election. The second half I have is over the past 12 months, the airport manager has had a long list of illegal, unethical, and ruthless activities. We all know this, including defrauding the county of revenue. He's refused to collect revenue. He's running his personal business to the airport. He's banned women and babies from the airport. He's operated outside his scope and authority. He's undermined the fair and objective treatment of all county residents and those that use the airport. Even a key hanger lease, he came up with some unreasonable terms that nine people couldn't even tolerate. He needs to be removed. Now, where you move him isn't important, but if we're talking about resolving the issue, the perception is that as long as he's there, he will continue to attack the commercial business activity. The perception is as long as Adon is there, that's all they're dedicated to do and that's all they're going to do. When they're out of the picture, I think we can look at this. A lot of us can step down and let things revert to what might be normal. I don't know. But those are my suggestions. Do something with Mr. Wells. Do something with Adon. The other thing that is really important here, although it may not seem so, is that the airport authority, the only law, seventy, ILCS five slash one, again copies to Carl or had them sent to Carl. This is the authorities under which the airport is founded. In the law, it talks about two different ways the airport can come into existence and it also talks about how those ways are to be implemented and how they're to be structured. And the airport authority or the airport advisory board and the county board are not working within the confines of the law on this issue. It doesn't import how it got to be that way, but we're asking for a solution here. We're asking for a fix. It's come up many times in the past. I just hope you guys will say, hey, okay. If Mark Isop has a suggestion and someone alluded to that, this is the law it operates under, then say so and then say, turn around and turn to the advisory board and say, whatever you need to do to get right with it, let's just do it. You know, I don't want to have to come in here anymore and complain about people and things, but I will as long as it continues. I'm hoping that you guys will see it that way and you'll say, hey, enough's enough. Adon is not making us look good. If you've got any questions, make it.
Thank you. Anybody in? If not, we'll go on with committee reports.
From the insurance committee met the other night, a discussion with the possibility of using insurance consultant for possible services to the county. This would be where you'd get a consultant either to do, as we were possibly looking at the commercial, possibly also later on maybe looking at the health insurance or maybe the full service type of a program, which is almost more of a human resources type of program, or you have somebody looking at the entire issue of insurance throughout your county. We talked with Bushu and Associates out of Hepingham, were the people who came and visited us. What amounts to is they gave us several different options and ideas. Initially, like I said, we looked at commercials was our guide. These are people who would go out and get standardized bids from anybody who wants to bid on them, giving us an idea of comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges. Or as they say, like if there is a need in certain areas, because as a county we have a lot of variance in what we need as far as insurance, maybe there is a time where you look at an apple and orange, but these are the people who can tell you, this is the difference between the apple and the orange.
And we're paying those people to?
To set up and what they do is it's usually set up on a three-year contract for just the commercial part. I think it's around $5,000 a year.
Forty-five, something.
Yeah, forty-nine.
What you're saying is they're not going to sell us anything. They're just advising us.
No.
Best idea that can come up.
Right, and what they're going to do is that way to make sure that everybody out there is on the level playing field.
They may not need some products some salesmen told us we need for.
Right, and it also maybe, so they would look at our whole plans. They could do the retainer part. They're supposed to be getting a bid back on that. Retainer part would be where they handle all facets of insurance. That also means that you send in your stuff to them. They handle it through those individual insurance companies. Maybe the advantage to that would be is that would be less time that it would take within our county offices to handle that. I don't know. You know, this is kind of a chance that you take in dealing with somebody like this. The other chance that you take is that by having professionals who bid things out professionally, they do know what they're looking at maybe better than, I'm picking on you and Dan and I. The three of us may look at this sheet of insurances throughout the course of our whole county.
And hopefully they would find that we have all insurance we need. Or we may miss something.
Because that is also one of the things that they look at. They do look at to make sure that you do have everything that's required, even as you're getting ready to go into any sort of health insurance now with the Affordable Care Act coming into play, probably around the first part of January. Sometimes it's just nice to have.
Is there anybody in this room that understands that entirely?
We all get better on this, like everything else, I guess. I don't know if anybody else was at that meeting wants to add anything to that. I thought for the most part it was a pretty productive meeting. People asked different questions. And I think Mr. Bushu was there, gave us pretty good answers to stuff. He's also supposed to be getting back with us, hopefully within this week, as far as how much they would actually do for a total, what they call the retainer fee, where they do handle just about all the insurance aspects of the county, including bidding. What they do is on this three-year cycle, you don't, they don't usually rebid every year. If you get the company, then they go back to that company. They have loss statements, they have profit statements. They have industry standards and then usually they just make sure that that company doesn't give you a skyrocketing rate, second or the third rate, you know, that type of stuff. And it's also based on your past history, both commercial wise and health wise.
Do they come in and do, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Do they come in and do, at our company, they come in and do surveys with all the, so they know what they're bidding on.
Yes.
And then when we get the package, then they also come in and give a seminar and say, here's how this works. Here's how you should do it. If you've got any problems, here's what website you go to to help us.
Yeah, and they also have, you have individual people down there that you constantly call. They have, I think, three or four people that handle.
Rather call Augie's office and say.
I mean, Augie's office would probably be the lead that would call that probably Billy Anne or somebody in there. They automatically have somebody to call right up front for anything. The other thing that they also provide on that is like the risk management areas. Like if we have higher areas here than what they think is probably acceptable, then they're going to look at that and say, something's wrong here. It may be, maybe your payroll you told us wasn't quite right or maybe your claims weren't quite right, but that's what they say.
You're having too many claims at the courthouse. What's the problem? Or out here.
Well, one last thing. Is there a possibility that, did they say anything to you about a cafeteria plan where the employees will have a chance to, it's not going to be all one single plan. It would be a chance, there's some employees that would be advantageous to have a high deductible. Some employees won't want any, or very little deductible. Is that a possibility or are we big enough to do that?
That's something you probably talk with that. That's more in your health insurance line. And right now I know that we already offer a health savings plan, you know, the federal.
Right.
I'm not sure that we offer an employee plus one or an employee, I know we offer an employee family. I'm not sure we offer employee plus one. I know we offer employees. So that would be the type of things, if we would choose to go with somebody like that, that's another phase separately where you go, okay, you're also going to be dealing with our health insurance. Initially, like I said, this all came out with the commercial part more so than anything else.
Oh, so that's where I'm kind of misled. I thought this was primarily about health insurance and everything else was coming.
This was originally about the commercial part, to make sure that we have everything covered from here to the airport, to uptown, to, you know, Treckman building, whatever else, in order of county health, that type of stuff. But then we're also trying to push back the health so that we can get that aligned on a yearly basis starting January one, two.
Yeah, people complained about the October date. Your anniversary date isn't with the calendar year and sometimes I get stuck with.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
So I mean, one of the things that we'll probably, we'll want to get their final bid and we'll want to look at it and anybody who's welcome to have any questions about it. We're hoping, you know, they're not going to be the ones that are going to automatically come out and say, hey, we're going to save you $10,000 on this or $5,000 on this. What they're going to do is here's the service, hopefully by everybody knowing what they're bidding and be able to get different bids. Hopefully you're going to see some savings.
Hopefully we break even.
You're going to have a streamlined, we're hoping, if you use somebody like this, you have a streamlined service that's going to go through. So this probably won't come up until August anyway, but we want to make sure that if anybody had any questions about.
Did you see any problems over here with it?
How about you?
I was there. I think it's a great idea. The committee is recommending it. I might mention at this point, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, that we would like, they need to know whether officially from us if we're going to go with that. So we're planning a special meeting on the 12th, Mr. Chairman, or did you want to? So that we can act on that and a couple of other issues.
After we get our, the price from on the both items, right.
One thing I would like to know, and maybe Augie can do this off the top of his head, but I wonder what it's costing us in man or female hours, whatever you want to say, to do this now. I mean, we're looking at what our insurance costs are. Jeff can tell us that, but what are we talking about? These people replace those office people that are doing?
They don't always replace those people. You still have to have a person kind of here on a local base, you know, that's like the liaison between those two things, which is a lot of what Billy Anne, the way I look at it, is kind of our liaison with a lot of the insurance on my off base there, Augie. We're pretty close, okay. And so you're still going to have some of that. Hopefully some of the things, though, if we go with the retainer part, then it may actually alleviate some of her time to do other things that maybe she needs to be doing also.
Right, I'm trying to factor in all of the savings on this because some people might say, well, you're just spending an extra $10,000 a year you don't need to spend. Why don't you have people do their job? Well, these people might do a little better job and maybe a little more efficient job than non-professional.
You're taking a chance. I'm not going to tell anybody. I mean, anytime you, you know, there's no guarantees. They're not, they're not going to make you a guarantee where they're going to save you $37,500. They're going to save you, or that you can get rid of four people. That still comes down to personnel issues and everybody's choice, but I don't know. I think that, I thought it was pretty well streamlined as far as what.
We've got 100 people working for the county all together. Oh, okay.
I'll tell you what it will do. It will give us a better confidence that we're covering what we should be covering and how it should be covered and that we'll have some confidence that we're not being abused. And that would be very.
Well, so I think the bidders too, I hate to use the word intimidation, but if they come to a bunch of us guys and we say, well, that sounds good, we don't know good from Shinola. But this guy's going to know exactly where it should be and who's.
And that's the one of the things that they would demand is that like there's nobody talks to any of the bidders, you know, from that standpoint individually. If we're letting them run it, then run it, so to speak. Everything turned in has to be turned in to them, so that stops, that stops for you from talking to somebody. Stops me from talking to somebody.
Exactly.
They just run the program.
All our insurance done by one business and as a bid, do we have bids for insurance? It's all done by Diamond Brothers. Anybody else?
Yes, they have all the insurance right now.
So they're actually in charge of what they want to.
Probably on a bid basis, though.
Well, they've had to bid it and they.
It's always a part of the bidding.
Yeah, they've given us good service. I mean.
No, I'm just saying.
Right, you know, and they're part of any bid process anyway. What this does, I think Jeff did on a point frame for me is like it's streamlined. It has a possibility of making sure that we're covered where we need to be covered. I think we've found in the last 10 to 15 years. Maybe we didn't have somebody who was just totally watching out for us. I think you could say it that way, but is that appropriate, Jeff, you think?
I think so.
Just formally look for us because we are, as individuals, we're individuals. I mean, that's not.
We still need to ask questions.
That's right. Oh, yeah, and there, I think by the other day, he doesn't care if you ask him a question.
We should keep it in town. We can.
Well, depends on how much it is. Any other things on that?
Any questions on insurance? Do you have any other committee reports?
I don't have anything else.
Carl?
Monday morning, this coming Monday, at 9:00 AM, we're having a sheriff building committee meeting at 9 o'clock at the Treckman building to discuss the jail. And we also need to schedule an airport meeting.
Yes.
For maybe later this week.
I'm open.
Friday, you said you can.
No, I kept Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday's fine, Carl. That'd be the first. I've got the calendar.
Yeah.
It was kind of a rhetorical question. What time do you want to meet? We got time to post that, right, Augie?
Yes, you do.
Thursday at 9:00 AM.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Can I ask what it's about?
No.
You want to make me ask?
Talk about the commercial lease, the key hanger lease.
Policies.
Policy.
We're not going to be able to conclude everything.
Right, just discuss it.
Right.
I just was thinking we need to call Jimmy.
Yes.
Call him before we leave here. I'll call him and make sure that's all right. That's it.
Got everything?
No.
Dan?
No dog problems. So for everything, at least I don't know any.
How about cats? You never said anything about cats.
They don't make this noise.
So.
That's right.
Take one of them, okay?
We have four or five at home I can get rid of and I want.
Okay, budget. I just handed out a copy of the up-to-date budget. It does not have the demand checks in it. The demand checks, the better part of it are, we did receive in Midwest flood recovery grant money for roughly 55.7. If you'll notice on the front page, most of the way down, I think, third from the bottom. That was what Kit worked and our previous director worked very hard to make sure that we got the rest of the money back in from that, what was that, the '08 flood?
Yeah.
No, it's a pass-through. And that's what I'm trying to explain, that that's all going out to other agencies. So we facilitated that. It was leftover monies that other agencies throughout the state did not collect. So we went after them for the agencies in the county, so.
You know where it's going to go?
I don't.
City of Crispin, townships.
I've got a thing right here that'll show you if you want to look through this.
No, you know Elbridge is going to get in for the, Elbridge and then there was another township. Maybe Paris is going to get some for water damage on the trigger creek.
Some of them didn't fill out the paperwork.
Okay.
But I face.
Kansas middle, Great America. I don't see anything for Elbridge.
Okay, I just wondered. They got a lot, so.
Okay. Anyway, the budget is sitting at our, we've got one-third of the year passed. You notice on the last page we're in pretty good shape for the budget at roughly 55% expenditures. You've got to add in that 100, roughly 100,000 that's sitting there that's going to be paid back out for these grants and so forth, so it's going to raise it to about 57%. I did, and this ties into that special meeting. I did talk to a gentleman by the name of David Pistorius. He's with First Midwest. He is available to come in on the 12th at that meeting and spend a little time with us and explain the airport money options that we have so that if we're going to act on it in September, we have the time to do it and do it in a timely way. We can fund it ourselves through means that we have, which may be less, we have less options than what we thought. We can do bonds and we can do what's known as a debt certificate. And I'm not going to explain all this out to you because he can do a much better job. The cost of bonds and debt certificate will roughly run about $4,500 to $5,000 to do, no matter what. And we, the debt certificates offer us a more streamlined, more efficient way to get lesser amounts of money at a very competitive rate. And he can explain to you who's eligible from the standpoint of banks or whether it could be out at the Interstar, who would be eligible that we could go to for the money with that debt certificate. But it's fairly straightforward. Also on the agenda, and I won't be there the next meeting or the study session, we're going to have the audit bid on so we can start the audit bid process and conclude that by October. Reason we're doing that, there was some confusion on fiduciary funds and I just think that it's a fairly decent idea to bid these things out. Not frequently, frequently, but we should make sure we're paying what we should be paying.
So what you're saying is we're going to bid for independent auditors?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have one now and they just concluded it.
Right, I saw that.
Right.
You're sending or bid packets out or that's?
No, we're, that's what we're going to do is authorize this, Augie and the finance committee to get a bid package ready and sent out and then so that you folks can act on it probably by the October meeting. Okay? So let's see if there's anything else. I think that's pretty much it. Don is generating the packets for the different department heads for budget, the budget process, so we can start building the budget at department head level. And then the finance committee will start meeting with the different departments later on next month, first of next September and get that all ironed out.
Speaking of Don, if I can interrupt you, where are we at tax-wise? Have we got any money?
I'm sorry, yes, we have. We've got 63.25%. He distributed last Thursday and distributed everything that he had at that date. So distribution or the collection rate was at 63.25. And we got 468,000 plus.
Is he anticipating any borrowing yet?
Well, of course, we had to borrow a little bit last month.
Okay.
But we're, no, we don't anticipate anymore.
What's a little bit?
100.
Okay.
But not for the general fund as much as we had to for some of the other special funds because of the commitments and I don't know whether I went through that. Maybe you weren't there. We had obligations in tort and in IMRF that were.
Right.
Not unreasonable, but unusual in the way they were built. So we'll recapture that and we'll be okay after this. Okay?
But the Crispin, the Crispin thing's taken care of now. The school thing, we don't have.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that was done.
Oh, yeah.
That was done June 28th?
Early June, late, late June.
Anyway, as soon as he had enough money to pay them, they were paid.
He wrote one check on it.
Right.
There was two weeks left to go in the fiscal year almost for them.
Well, yeah, maybe, anyway, as soon as that was, that hundred and some thousand was available, he got paid out.
Any other reports?
Nope, unless there's some questions.
County clerk?
No, I don't have anything.
Something else come before, entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about setting the meeting for the 12th?
I thought we did that.
No.
We didn't set a time or place.
We need a special meeting to make a decision on that insurance and on the bonding for the airport. You said you already made a tend to date with the.
Right, and I just have to tell him what time. And also we were, if the, if the new appointment was available, we were also going to possibly make that that day.
That's a full board meeting or a committee?
Special.
Why can't we make that at the board meeting?
What's that?
That's going to be that whole next week later on.
We push the, we push the board meeting back.
Oh, it's too late to make it. I'm sorry. You're right, you're right. I understand that now, okay.
We need to move, some of these things need to be moved up sooner.
I understand.
Waiting till end of the month.
Might as well get, in that way we'd have, if a new member is available, then he would, or she would be able to attend the next board meeting.
So three of you need to come into the office and sign the request.
I'll do it on the way through.
I got airport bonding or debt certificates and insurance. What else?
And the possible action on.
Remember.
Possible litigation.
Yeah, as well put that on there. Well, that's up to the chairman. He has set time or place. Did you happen to check those?
Yes, for courthouse.
Did you check the availability?
Can you check?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Probably a little.
Nine o'clock, if that's.
You'll send that later?
Monday, Monday the 12th, Monday, Monday the 12th.
Normally there's no court that morning at nine.
That's why I've got my BlackBerry.
Black, yeah, Ben.
Yeah, sure.
Would you find a broken one in the ditch?
Technology like pass me by one.
Now I'm moving to adjourn.
Well, we need his answer for, so we can find it.
I think he said nine o'clock in the courthouse was okay, right, Augie?
Well, I.
So far as we know now.
I'm confirming with Marty
Yeah.
that we can have that, I don't know if there's some special thing that's, but.
By the time we get three of you up there, you'll know what or not.
We'll know, yes.
And then you'll send out an agenda and.
Yes.
By email or something.
Yeah, now who adjourned, who made the motion?
Voight. Doesn't matter.
Well.
Yeah, Voight and then Bruder, Voight Bruder.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, thank you, fine.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we gotta finish the other.
Yes, we do.
You can't pee yet.
I'll go tell Aaron, we're ready.
He's, he's got.
Oh, okay.
Any old business? Any new business? Oh, got one.
Old business, the Staley slab.
Staley slab, yes, sir.
Remember, or was it Midwestern, no, Midwestern gas, it's closed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I know, you know, Doug was, we were gonna do something and then he decided not to.
Correct.
So, he talked with the new road commissioner.
Yeah, we, we, to make it simple, we spent a lot of time trying to save that slab with a lot of energy and money and time. And we never could get together on what needed to happen there. Not, not, we.
I know.
Okay. Well, what needs to happen? Nothing, no, that needs about seven hundred thousand more bridge.
At one point, it could've been fixed.
Oh, yeah, well, we, let's just say.
I mean, it was already set up to fix it and everything.
Yes, sir, we have contractor and everybody's sitting right next door, when they built the bridge there at the four-hundredth.
Right.
They were gonna come over and drive some pile and we had.
So it's two parked on now, so it's gonna, if you're gonna put something up, it has to be a bridge.
No, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the township, but as the county engineer, I'm telling you that I would not invest serious money in the slab, that I'd be pushing for a bridge. But that's not to say you couldn't, it, look, it's Sugar Creek, it, it, it's my strong opinion that a creek of that size probably shouldn't have a slab. Moving forward, now, if there's a slab there from the horse and buggy base and you can use it and get across, I'm all about it. Could you put a number of horns across it? It's Sugar Creek, it's a, it needs a big expensive bridge. Okay. To be as simple as I can, and, and my last board instructed me, it's in my minutes, to, my last board chose or stated that if I was going to spend money out there, that they, that it was their desire that I spend it on Staley. I don't know if we need to revisit that now that we have a new board, but the last board said, I've got it in my mind. Your own hand, it's the only one complaining, so.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot, several houses on Staley Road, and there's one or two houses going to the north.
Yeah, just, actually, two. Staley, we had a, we had a grant for Staley that I turned down because it was only a hundred thousand dollars for. Staley's, uh, Staley's active in this department, we're not spending a lot of money on free, free-limiter engineering because we have to get people on board, and Elbridge has already signed up for a half-million dollar Christmas tree bridge. So, I'm looking for money for Staley, Midwest is too late and it's. Okay. What have you got down there now, I'm, I've not been down there and looked, have you got? At Midwest? Yeah, at, 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 at the gas. What do we have? Is there barricades or just a sign or? And pile. Okay. Yeah, we, we, people find ways to do it, but I don't think they have this time, I think, I don't think they're getting around it this time. And they don't wanna get around it, it's. No, I can't cross it, it didn't like to tour a truck up, I didn't know it was like that. Well, I mean, I don't think you can cross anymore. Okay. That's all, okay.
Any other old business?
Any other new business? Anybody have any new business, anybody comfortable with where we're at on the high school, anybody certainly feel free to come, I, I feel very good about where we're at with high school. I would really encourage.
As we talk.
Dialogue from you guys, yeah.
All right.
Well, next time the board meeting, maybe we can understand more of what you were asking, this last board meeting, I didn't quite understand, because I probably went listening at this meeting, so when we voted that.
Understand.
Yeah, so next time, I will pay a little attention.
Make sure I answer every question you have, because I think, I think we're in a critical stretch here. I think we need to work together and understand what's going on. Does anybody know where they're at, out there at the high school, about where?
You mean with high schools helping?
Yes.
Side of the theater, yeah.
Let's go into this one.
I'll move on to the next, public comment, is there any public comment?
You comment, right, right now, yeah.
My, my question pertains to the airport, I understand the, the push for moving forward, there was some urgency to get Hanson Engineering involved. You folks have read the statute, you have an engineer right here at the highway department that the statute outlines can't be the engineer for the airport. And it seems like a whole lot smarter move to do things in-house than farming it out to somebody else. Didn't mean to sell you under the bus there, Aaron.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you guys want me to comment on that, yes, please, please comment.
I'd mention it too.
The, I don't know anything about what's going on out there, I would encourage y'all to look to see if the engineering's covered. I suspect, if you're not writing checks, that someone is. And it's only then that we would try to ram that into our program here, I mean, there's, there's gonna come a place where we may need projects that are reimbursable, right now it's not going, but, so my point is if there is engineering going on out there, and there has to be. I don't know if you guys are cutting checks or.
No, yeah, no, we won't be responsible for cutting any checks till later this fall.
So if it's not coming out of local money, then it's coming out of federal money?
The engineering is coming out of local money.
It's all locally funded.
The engineering?
Yes. Okay, you may wanna consider backing off your project so that some of your engineering's funded through the beds. I'm well advised, but I, I think, I think Kirk's observations has merit, but we're, we're buried and we would certainly be willing to to discuss anything that you guys may have questions on. I, I would be happy to serve in like an advisement role if you guys sought my advice.
We're discussing at the meeting, right?
Yeah, right, I'm kinda in a, I don't know what I'm talking about, basically, so.
This is only three hundred thousand of this, oh, and then five eighty-six. Local match is thirty-three, but it doesn't tell you what it's for, it doesn't tell you.
Well, we, yeah, we pay the, according to Jim, we pay the P E.
And the C E to watch it, so you can get, Howard Furnish watches your courthouse.
All I know is that that's what our, that's what our exposure is.
Okay.
Unless it goes a little over, and historically it's stayed within a couple of grand.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't wanna get anybody's neck, but Howard Furnish watches your courthouse, it did cost the county dying. And, but, and that's not something I want, we, we don't need the extra work.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
No, that, that's, we start the next year anyway, so you actually.
Well, the engineering and lighting and stuff is surely going on right now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the impression I had was engineering was, there was an urgency on it, and that's, it's just a suggestion.
Uh, all public comments? With that, with no public comment, just me and Jim, thank you.